We want to welcome you to our city commission study session. We ask that you turn off for solids or cell phones. Our meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and at midnight. First item on the agenda, study session is our land bank for Leavenworth.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to turn this item over to our Director of Planning, Community Development, Julie Hurley, and then Mary Dwyer. So Julie?
So we've been thinking of ways to help deal with some of our vacant properties that we have in town. As you know, we demolish a number of vacant and blighted properties and we're, we've been thinking of ways to maybe bring some of them back into use. And so land banks are one tool that's available in Kansas. So we've been exploring that option. Mary Dwyer has looked into that quite a bit. And so she's just going to give you a rundown of what we've put together and what we think might work for us here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. A land bank is a public authority that's created to hold and maintain foreclosed and vacant properties. A land bank acts as a legal and financial mechanism to do that. So it's established generally by a government, often it's funded by that government, to manage the disposition of the tax foreclosed properties. So they take the properties that they might be considering into a land bank. They work on finding the owners. If they find the owners, they try to get them to either act responsibly on that property or if that's not possible, then they can donate the property to the city or it will go to tax foreclosure and perhaps the city would acquire it in that way. We're thinking about using the legislation that's already been established by Kansas statutes. There are several cities in Kansas that have already used land banks. KCK is probably the biggest, but also Hutchison, Junction City, and Pittsburgh have all decided to go ahead forward with that. And the sizes of their land banks vary on what they want to take into their land bank as properties. And some of them take vacant land, some of them don't. You know, KCK will take everything into their land bank. So the advantages of a land bank, it puts the property back into the community as a housing stock and also as a taxable structure. It can eliminate some of the vacant small lots that happen when we do a demolition of a house in the older sections of town. It can eliminate years of maintenance that we might have on those properties that the code enforcement officers have to schedule in Abbott regularly mode. The sale of the properties can reimburse the city for costs of maintaining that structure until sale. And it can clear the title of the property, allowing it to be sold and restored and usable housing stock. Some of the disadvantages would be that the land bank requires upfront costs to set up the legal issues with the land bank. It also takes the government to buy into the time invested in approving the land bank and setting up a land bank board. A land bank board is established, like many of the boards that we already have, is appointed by either the commissioner or the mayor, depending on how you want to structure that. Say, for example, Pittsburgh has a board of trustees, seven members. Some of them have only five, but that would be something that we would design within the structure of it. It takes cooperation with the county on foregoing taxes owed. It takes some administrative time, though Julie and I are thinking we're going to start small, we're going to see how it goes and then pop it up maybe from there. And then the other thing is that it might be perceived by some in the community as the government trying to control housing stock. But I think that's pretty limited because most of the times they're really grateful to have something in their community restored as housing stock. I gave you a short synopsis of kind of how the potential land bank process would go once it was established. And so we'd identify properties through code enforcement or staff recommendations. We'd have a title company do a title search, which we already do primarily for demolitions to find out true ownership. We would go more in depth in trying to locate the owners of that property, doing more research into perhaps finding heirs, that kind of thing, to be able to find someone who might be able to take ownership of that property. The property's advertised in the legal section of the paper to locate an owner. Letters are sent, like we do with demolitions. The land bank then has the owner either donate the property or if you can't find the owner, then you work to clear the title. And so that requires some legal work in that one. And then the land bank sells the property in a competitive bidding process and vetting of the person that's going to take the property to make sure that they'll get it all done within a specified amount of time.
Just briefly to interject, a lot of times these houses that are on the demo list, there are companies or individuals or small groups in the community who want to rehab these properties. And this is potentially a way to make that process easier to do.
Yeah, I would say within every demo that we've done, we have a couple of houses that are both viable and could be saved if we could find the owner and if we could clear the title. And it's the clearing of the title that's the most important in the process. So this process would both help us with our demo process and also would help the community kind of save some of those structures that could be rehabbed into stock. Because if those rehabbers are flippers or whatever you want to call them, if they can't find the owner, then it has to go to demolition. And I find that a pretty sad process. So I'm interested in trying to do something like this. I did go to a conference. It was a three-day conference and big binders of information, but it boils down to pretty much what we've just explained in steps and process. And so we're really looking to provide you answers if you have questions and to look for some direction as to whether or not you would like us to move forward into looking into this.
So how many homes are you planning on starting out with?
A couple, two or three.
That's if the commission thinks this is a good idea.
Yeah, if the commission thinks it's a good idea, then we would have to develop some policies and procedures. We'd have to get some legal things set up. And then, once we started, we would look at doing two or three, probably a year, within our structure and see how that goes.
Well, I appreciate you doing the research. I think it's a good idea. It's going to help beautify the community and also get the houses back on the tax road.
That would be the main idea. Yep.
Let's, you have a house, what, for three years in the arrears on taxes, it goes on a tax sale on the courthouse steps. Is it three years or is it five?
Five.
Five, okay. So... Three? That's what I was saying, three, okay. So if I don't pay my tax for three years, sheriff on the courthouse steps has an auction. Are you saying then that we get first dibs? That we could go up there and say, "We want that," and it takes everybody out of the bidding process?
No, we wouldn't necessarily get first dibs. What I'm saying is that we would work with the county if there was a property that we wanted to do. Ideally, we would catch these properties before five years.
Well, they're saying three years is the sheriff's sale.
It's three that it can go to the sheriff's sale.
Yeah, but they...
But do they go after three? Well, okay, regardless, okay, go ahead.
But your point's still valid. It's a gap before the deadline.
The problem is with some of the houses is that by the time it waits that full amount of time, whether it's three years or five years, it's gotten enough deferred maintenance that structural failure already starts. And by the time code enforcement officers see it on the outside, on the inside, it has gone to heck in a handbasket. I think that's a legal term. Anyway, it has done that. And so when you see them, if, we've taken pictures of properties, our asbestos inspector takes pictures of each room as he does it, and you can see the deferred maintenance has really taken a toll. Plus, when you have a building, one good example was that there was one building where the owner had died. He left that property to no one. It was in pretty good shape. It was a beautiful house. It was a craftsman-style house, but it was starting to fail on the outside. So there was nothing we could do except choose to either demolish it or leave it stand there. And when they stand there in the community, what happens is people who shouldn't be there are there, they're doing things they shouldn't be. And so then the house has even further deferred, well, further damage because, you know, they're just interesting people.
And when you say establish a land bank, you're talking property with a building on it, not just blank property.
Right, we wouldn't be looking at taking vacant lots.
Wouldn't take a vacant lot.
Land banks can do that, and so that might be something to explore in the future.
But that's not what you're talking about here.
But that's not the initial goal, is what we're looking at.
Initially, we're just looking at houses that might be able to be salvaged within that time period. And again, and part of it is that by the time that they get to the tax sale, sometimes they're just not salvageable.
Right. Well, if they would go to the tax sale, the owner that purchased it then would have to try to find the owner of the real estate, you know, like you said, to get a clear title to it, or...
That's something that we would work on with the county on. The way the statute has it set up, we would work with the county and the county would be able to help us clear the title without it going to the tax sale. One issue when they go to tax sale, if someone purchases it, there's no guarantee that they're going to do anything with it. You know, with the tax sale properties, they can't go into them before they purchase them. And so that, someone might buy a property for $3,000, get into it, "Well, it's not worth my time and effort," and then nothing happens. And with a land bank, there's a contract when the land bank sells the property to an individual or a company, that the repairs have to be done within a certain amount of time or the land bank takes it back over. So we would be then guaranteed that these would be improved and brought back into use that way.
Well, I think it's a fantastic idea. It's one, like the mayor said, is going to retain some homes on the tax road rather than tearing down everything, which I've been opposed to, most of those anyway. Does this land bank or the city have any control over the rental of the, if the person buys one and redoes it, is, do they have to stay with HUD or is HUD involved in it anyway? Can they charge what the current price is for rent?
This isn't a HUD process. This is strictly a city process. And the city, like we said, would have to work with the county in a cooperative agreement. We feel like the climate might be good now to have that cooperative agreement. And so, but it would be a city process. HUD doesn't have any role in this.
I didn't think it did, but I just wanted to clarify.
So it would be fair market, whatever.
Okay, well, I support it.
And they could use it for their own living or for investment property?
Correct.
Yeah, we'd have no say in that.
And this is, this would be a city program. Has this tool, this innovation tool, because I think it is innovative, has it been around for a while in the state or is it just something that came up in recent years?
It has. I looked up Pittsburgh, how long they've had theirs, and they signed their ordinance in 2015. And I think Topeka's was before that. No, not Topeka, I'm sorry. KCK. So I think it's been around for a while. And it's got a pretty good track record in some of those cities.
I think it's a very worthy goal as far as housing stock restoration and like everyone has said here, getting the properties back on the tax rolls, eliminating blight and also helping with the appearance and the image of the city, so.
Mr. Mayor, President Griswold, you sort of stole my thunder there. I was going to mention if there's any thought of, you know, kind of where did this come from? This came directly from the commission goal-setting session. I mean, engage in partnerships to benefit, look, perception, quality of life in the city. This is a partnership with the state essentially to set this up. Determine options to focus on perpetually blighted properties, including all legal opportunities available to the city. This is a legal type of action, so I applaud the staff, but this is driven by...
And this is similar to the community development stuff that the city and that I did when I was in community, worked in, with the organization to fix up properties and that sort of thing. And then the city was doing it, was doing that, under the Housing Resources Corporation. So then this would be real similar to that, I would think. Is that correct? It is, except that we won't be actually doing the development. It'll, we'll help clear the title of the property and make it available. And then the free market will take care of purchase, either for home use, personal use, or for some kind of commercial use. Because I don't think we should be in the business of rehabbing it ourselves, so that's... We got plenty right now. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, good idea.
A couple other just quick notes is, it is technically unfunded. We have some funding available to set something up, you know, as far as some of the limited legal work and such that, but we'll continue to monitor it internally, see how it works. And we do plan to start small, do, get a couple, get our feet wet, if the commission is amenable to that. Probably have another study session here in the next, I don't know, 60 days or so to update you where we are. You never know, as you start going through this process, what may pop up. You don't know what you don't know. So we wanted to bring this in. It sounds like there's a consensus to have staff pursue this and set something up.
It's good that there's other cities that you can go by to for information. Yeah, I've gotten all their documents, so I've got a big file to look at.
Good idea.
Great.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you to move item three up to item two? We have a distinguished visitor here, I'll introduce. In all seriousness, we do have the district engineer for KDOT came up to this. So I'd ask Jason Van Nice to come up and, not just because he's here, but I'll mention that we've met a couple weeks ago with Mr. Van Nice about multiple issues in the city of Leavenworth, and his office has been very accommodating, very quick with responses. Sidewalk out on Spruce Street was a project that he facilitated within about 10 days of us bringing it to attention, getting that sidewalk back open. Good partner on the Centennial Bridge project. Nobody likes bridge maintenance projects, but they have to happen, and Jason's been very good. So I didn't know he was coming up tonight, but I'm glad to have him, so I wanted to introduce him and thank him for his cooperation.
Thanks for coming.
So I'm sorry, you can introduce the item.
Yep, Kansas Department of Transportation, right-of-way mowing.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just briefly before I turn this over to our Public Works Director, the commission continues in its goal-setting to sort of put priority on appearance and especially to the entryways of the city. We've been working with Mr. Van Nice and KDOT on what can we do on the west side of the bridge. It was in that meeting a couple weeks ago that he mentioned that there are programs or ways in which the state's limited ability to maintain right-aways can be transferred to the city with some, so that's kind of the concept in general. And I'm going to turn this over to our Public Works Director and Mr. Van Nice to talk a little bit about that project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, well, we're doing the technical stuff. It's all right. We are, as mentioned by city manager, exploring ways where the city can improve the general appearance to the city as you come in across Centennial Bridge. Initially, this was focused on the city could take over maintenance of that part of the bridge. From, say, Fourth Street East to the beginning of the bridge, there's four islands that look a little scruffy from time to time. There's a lot of grass that can be mowed. There's trees and bushes that are overtaking the roadway. And so we had a meeting last Friday with Parks, Parks Director, Planning Director, and myself, because we're all involved somewhat with mowing and maintenance of things. And we asked Jason to bring his local staff that takes care of the Centennial Bridge. And a little background, KDOT has state highway right-of-way, of course, throughout the state. In a broad sense, if it has a fence associated with it, they're going to be considered to be generally responsible for taking care of vegetation within the fences. It's not a hard, fast rule, but it's a pretty good guideline. If there's not a fence, the city rules apply where you've got to maintain your yard and the state's property or the city's property out to the edge of the curb line. Well, the property up on Metropolitan is within a fence and KDOT does their very best to maintain it, that's mow it periodically, as often as once and sometimes twice a year. And every once in a while, if it gets out of control, particularly up on Fourth Street, where you go around the corner, you're headed north and going to drive west, you see, it's like a hayfield out there next to the curb. Typically, KDOT will mow that property about once a year. If it gets out of control and we ask them nicely, they'll generally get it a second time, weather permitting, and they have a fairly limited staff. So our initial thought was we ought to be able to do that. And when we talked with Jason and all of the city staff, realistically, you go back to this early picture here, that is a hillside we are not interested in mowing. And it's steep, it's long, and there's one just like on the other side, except it's covered with rocks. In this particular hillside here, KDOT mows with a big piece of mowing equipment, and they have one guy that says he'll do it. No one else is interested in doing it, they're scared of it. And none of our staff or our contractors are remotely interested in taking on...
Where is that? Is that by the First Command building?
That's down in the parking lot of First Command. You're looking kind of northeast. The bridge starts right here, I'll blow this up just a little bit here. It is, it's a fairly scary hill to mow, and if you don't mow it a lot, the grass gets tall and that makes it more difficult at one time when you do mow it. So as we talked a bit about what is we're actually trying to accomplish, and I have some language in here, there's an existing permit we have with KDOT to maintain roads in the city. And then there's a new permit, there's some language that we're a little concerned about. Whether we do a new permit or an old permit was an issue. But talking with Jason and what we really realized is we want this to look better, not necessarily that we want to take over all the maintenance. So it was kind of a paradigm shift. And what we kind of agreed on was if we can define what we would like to do, like we want to go out there and we want to mow the grass within, say, 10 feet of the curb line, and where we want to maintain the medians, pick up the trash, we want to sweep it more often than we do, says write a nice letter to him at KDOT, and there's probably a much simpler permitting process for that. To do that without getting involved in some of these crazy things that exist out there that they do, taking care of this, we could probably put in there that we would like to go in there and cut all the trees down and try to kill the stumps. But that's a one-time thing, then you wait 10 years and do it again, if that's what we want to do. But that, those trees are related to the picture here. Those trees don't come from the edge of the pavement, a lot of them come from further down. So if we can define what we would like to do, KDOT says they believe that they can find a permit that makes sense for both them and for us, to let us go out there and do that. It would require such things as notification, we'd have to have an approved traffic control plan, we've got to wear the safety vests, and we'd have to use equipment that's appropriate for the activities that we're doing.
That, kind of where we left that?
Yeah, I think that sums it up. The idea being that we would more or less continue doing our regular maintenance of these areas, and then the extra stuff that city wants to do to make it look better would be up to the city and we would find a way to let that happen.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah. What was that, what'd you say?
I said it sounds like a good idea to me. It is kind of gnarly, go out of town, look at that.
Is this picture coming across the bridge going west?
Yeah, this is driving west inside, they're just off the bridge on the right as you drive in, that's, looks like a forest. You can't see anything, which is perhaps good, but if you're looking to improve the view or something, then this really needs to go, it needs to be gone more often.
Well, one thing in reading the Ritahead packet, those islands, which were pretty nice there at the intersection of Metropolitan and Fourth Street, is that a state responsibility to keep the, because I got with the city manager, you know, last year because, you know, the little grass has grown up there and it doesn't look good. Actually, they're very nice-looking structures if we can keep them, you know, trimmed and the weeds pulled and things like that. So yes, I mean, that's one aspect of what I would like to see get done.
I will tell you that we have from time to time accidentally killed the weeds, swept the islands, swept the street.
Yeah, we have done a little bit of work on the island.
But it is technically, it is our responsibility, KDOT.
And how about between the intersection of Metropolitan and Fourth and the front entrance to, the main entrance to the post on the north side, is that, is that a KDOT responsibility too? And that's what you were talking about, that could look a little bit better, right?
Yes, the conversation today was Fourth Street, Fourth Street East, but that area is similar situated where if that were something that we felt compelled to, we should do more of, then we would probably need to contact them.
I got to cure all to everything, but it's never going to happen. Here's our new bridge.
That would solve a lot of problems.
That would be nice, yes.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
We'll work on basically, we don't need to figure it out this year, I think this year's kind of over. But I think we can work together a description of what we would like to do and kind of how often we would like to do it and review with the city manager and if we found appropriate, we would submit it to KDOT for action as a permit.
If I'm going west on Metropolitan from Fourth to Grant Avenue on the north side, where does the fourth responsibility start? At the fencing line? Outside?
Basically, if the main east-west sidewalk, about five feet north of that is outside the state highway right-of-way, then federal responsibility begins.
What about the signs that are in that location between Fourth and Metropolitan and the front entrance to the post? I've just noticed going in lately that there's some signs that are kind of, is that, you know, kind of crooked? Is that a city responsibility?
There are some, I'll say, there are some questions you shouldn't ask if you don't want the answers. But in general, the signs on Metropolitan are the state responsibility to maintain. They have been very good to work with. If we put up solid, properly designed signs that support our issues of noting notable figures that live in the community, this way to downtown, that sort of thing. Technically, those signs are there without a permit, but...
Yeah, I'm not complaining about the signs, I just get a little concerned when they're tilted, you know, there's, right now, there's one, if you go into the post, and I just happen to recognize those things. And so I was just asking, and it's something that, as one commissioner, that I think adds to the appearance and the image of the city if we can keep up with that. And I didn't, I thought it was a city responsibility, but those couple of signs that I saw just east of the main entrance, you're telling me are the state responsibility, so.
Right, if it says that turn here for more Leavenworth, that is their sign. And if you let us know, we'd be happy to, and that's what you've done, we'll be happy to send those on to them.
Can we, if we're finished talking about this, can I ask, target of opportunity, just in terms of the bridge, and I reinforce and echo Commissioner Dedeky's comments about just, you know, the curving and the street, and I know that the city manager has talked to the KDOT engineer, and we're looking probably two or three, maybe even four years now. But that, that looks terrible, obviously, and I don't know why it's deteriorated so quickly, but what can you tell us about, I mean, the best thing would be to get a new, you know, a new bridge, but I don't think that's going to happen in three or four years. So, I mean, do you see any light at the end of the tunnel with respect to maybe, not in the next six months or anything, but what do we, what can we do? not in the next six months or anything, but what do we, what can we do maybe to? Because it just looks terrible when you're, you're coming from Missouri, coming into, you know, the, the city of Leavenworth, just the, how that curb is just messed up and all the metal that's exposed and things like that.
Yeah, no, I, I can't disagree. It does look terrible.
Right.
Our evaluation of that is it's really a primarily a cosmetic issue. It doesn't affect the structural health of the bridge, right? So what our plan is, is to bundle those repairs up with some deck surface repairs and also with repainting the steel superstructure, with repainting the arches. And like you said, that's probably two to four years away before we get that finalized. I'm confident that your city staff won't let us forget about that, that project. Personally, it's when we turn in our list of priority bridge repair projects every year, it's gonna be pretty, pretty high on my list of things to do.
That's good.
But it always comes down to the availability of funding. And, you know, we have a long list of bridges across the state that need attention, and we prioritize them all out, and we go down the list as far as we have money to touch.
Did the funding for, for KDOT overall go up for the 2020 or?
It is up a little bit, yeah. Yeah, they've, the, the transfers out of the KDOT funding have been decreased a little bit this year. So we have a little bit more money for 2020, and we hope that that trend will continue. Of course, we've been doing these local consultation meetings and soliciting input from, from a lot of locals and different people. So hopefully that trend continues and we continue to have money to do projects like that.
Just one other question. Why did that, those curbs and the, and the gutter there, did they, did that deterioration caused by some defect in the materials or just, do we know?
I think that's just natural deterioration of the concrete. You know, those take a lot of salt and, you know, the freezing and thawing and the salt deterioration on there. I think that's just a natural deterioration of the concrete.
And that's not coated steel either.
No, that, no, that's not epoxy-coated steel. When that thing was built, we don't have a lot of the kind of native or the inbuilt, built-in corrosion protection measures that are there, so. So I think that's just natural deterioration of an old structure.
One of the things we'd asked Jason is if it was possible to sweep the street. And he said yes, and, and, but we're, we could not receive permission to walk along the curb and shovel the debris into the streets so we could sweep it. So we'll try again probably.
Yeah, we'll keep doing that as we have time and resources, but.
Well, maybe if we fix up the landscaping on the side, people won't notice that. Yeah, don't look down.
So we'll report back to the commission what we come up with. There's no plan for this to be like a weekly mowing. I mean, we just want to sort of make it better. And I think that's what the commission expects, you know, again, unfunded, but we can find some funding to, to make that look better, so. And again, I, I did it before and I'll, I'll do it again. Jason's been great to work with. KDOT gets beat up a lot, but as our district engineer, you know, coming up tonight, when, when I didn't even know he was coming, is, he's been, he's been a good partner to work with.
Right.
On some of those small islands, Fourth and Metropolitan, how, what are they, 100 square feet or?
Probably two or 300.
Is there, on some of those small islands, not the great big expans, expansive areas, has there ever been given any thought to putting ground cover, like a VINCA or something that requires, you know, no maintenance and it gets thick enough that it chokes out all the weeds?
My recollection is when we designed that, that the state said, "Not no way, not no how."
Okay, okay. Because it never required no maintenance, it was an initial cost, but it's, and it doesn't grow high. And it chokes out anything. Good, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Stop by one of our local restaurants. Number two, item proposed updates to the procurement policy.
Our finance director and deputy director are here tonight, Ruby and Brandon, to go over some changes to our policy, purchasing policy.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello, sir.
At the 2019-2020 City Planning Goal Setting Session, finance was directed to make recommendations and revisions to the current purchasing policy. The directive simply was to simplify the bidding process and attempt to increase eligible bidders. After some review and looking at some municipalities throughout the state, namely Lawrence, Derby, Cedric County, and Alathas purchasing policies, we have come up with some recommendations to, to fix some omitted errors, oh, not errors, to update some policies and, and add to, excuse me. We believe we've addressed the concerns, as long as updated some previously omitted items. Overall, the policy is largely unchanged. I'm willing to walk you through the top five of the significant changes we have in the procurement policy. The first section is on page 10 of your, of your document. It's basically just adding an ethics section. It's pretty standard language from GFOA. It's the recommended language. Basically, it's dealing with conflict of interest for purchasing. The second is adding language to the finance staff for them to basically allow and to communicate with bidders via email and some more modern technologies. The previous policy basically said we had to mail. We couldn't accept protest letters and challenge letters through email. They had to mail them. They only have five days to reply to a letter. And so this just kind of streamlines the process and we can get it through quicker. The third change is to the affirmative action letters. Now we are only requiring that bidders have it on file with the city manager's office. I've spoke with Charity in the city manager's office, and we have a file on the K Drive currently that she will be uploading those documents on there. In the past year, we've had numerous bidders that were rejected, not because they didn't follow the policy, but because they neglected to put the affirmative action letter into the document. And so when we were evaluating this, we decided that as long as it's on file with the city, which is really the purpose of it, we're going to continue to allow that bid to go through. Additionally, we added some language for request for information. And that's pretty standard language you'd see in purchasing policies or procurement policies throughout the state. And then also.
What was that? Request for what?
Request for information.
Oh, request for, okay. I just didn't hear that one. Sorry.
And so basically, those are kind of, if the city has a unique challenge, I mean, they wanted to go out to the free market and ask what kind of solutions they have. And then the final change would be the increase of thresholds for bid bonds, labor and material payment bonds, and performance bonds. Currently, the threshold is $15,000 for construction projects. We're gonna increase that to 25,000. That falls in line with some of our insurance policies. It will allow for more bidders for smaller projects. So they won't have to go through the process of securing bid bonds on the smaller processes. With that, I'll stick around for any questions, and I just want to thank the department heads. They submitted quite a bit of input in this process.
A lot of these changes were driven by best practices, but also by experiences we've had over the last couple of years. Just anecdotally, the Riverfront Flooring Project, we had a couple of bidders that said they didn't want to do bid bonds for a project that size. It's too much hassle, so they didn't. So there's just sort of some anecdotal stuff. We've had some local bidders who have, you know, it's their responsibility due to the affirmative action. So I still think that, you know, tossing a bid was the right thing. But as Brandon said, the intent is to follow the program and have it on file. So it's maybe one less thing as these businesses who are putting out bids all over the city, one last thing they have to try to keep track of for their bid bonds. So we hope they're common sense changes.
I've got one real quick question. Will this, I have to hire another personnel for this? Or is the workload sufficient that existing personnel could handle?
We'll use existing staff.
I'm sorry?
And you will use existing staff.
Thanks.
I'm pretty impressed by the specificity of what's been delineated. Just a question, is, could any of this be turned into, I mean, maybe the heart of the process be turned into some flow diagram or something? I'm just saying that somebody might want to take a quick look and get an overview, just a suggestion. The other thing is, the purchasing agents and various people within the staff, do we have training programs? Because this, you know, particularly I think for the purchasing agents who are doing this and have to abide by all these specifications, is there some training available for them to do that?
Yes, Stephanie is our purchasing agent within the finance department. And she belongs to the NIGP, which is the National Institute of Government Procurement. And we're also looking at other training, more in-depth training, because procurement laws are pretty extensive and very comprehensive, and so.
Yeah, this is a comprehensive document, and it just, it dawned on me that, you know, training is pretty important. And that may be an area that we need to reinforce a little bit. What was the other thing? Oh, I know most of the, if not all of them, but most of the contracts or bid kind of technically accept low, low price, technically acceptable. But we do have this thing called best value. But we don't use that very often, right? Or we just use that if there's like something wrong with the initial low bidder who's, who's technically acceptable. Is that?
Low qualified bid is what we typically use. And if there's no reason to discount the low bid, then we don't. But we do look at the lowest qualified bid, so, or the lowest. We do have the option to recommend if there's situations, and we don't do that that often. Most people who bid on our stuff, we've dealt with before, but we've done that a couple of times.
Right. It's best response, the best and most responsive. So you're right, the, the lowest price isn't always the deciding factor. It's whether or not they, we feel comfortable that they're going to be able to meet our specifications or, or actually perform the job that we're requesting.
Yeah, and I know that's more of an exception rather than a rule. But if that happens, you'll point that out to the commission when these contracting actions come in front of the commission?
You should do.
Oh, the only other thing is, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but we talk about kind of the proposal, you know, the requirements for the bidders, for the contract firms out there. I didn't see anything, and this is one of my things that I always look for is, and maybe it doesn't need to be mentioned, but I don't see anything in here about quality control, quality assurance as far as being, and I'm, hopefully, in terms of those requests for proposals, that documentation that goes out from the city, it includes what the contractor is gonna have to come back and do with respect to his own quality assurance, quality control. So I'm just wondering if, if that's something that we at least want to mention once in this, you know, in this new document. But I'm not directing anything. I just wondered about that, because it is a big part. I think it's a big part of these solicitations that go out in terms of what we get back.
And we can look at that.
Yeah.
Those are typically put into the bid specifications. All of those things are lined out into those.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Appreciate it. Next item on your agenda, review 16th Terrace, Thornton Drainage System.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'll turn this over in a minute to our Public Works Department Director Mike McDonald and Deputy Director Mike Hooper. We are two-thirds of the way through our stormwater program for the first year. We've done a lot of projects. We've brought a lot of areas to you. Second and Chestnut has come to you. Independence Court has come to you. Orange Fence One is completed. We did some change orders and some work at 16th Terrace and Thornton. We've done a bunch of work at 14th and Pawnee that's ongoing. So we're continuing. We're rolling along. So tonight, we're gonna bring to you the next phase of a project that you've already seen and approved multiple sections of. But it's a standalone project as part of a system, but we wanted to bring it to you to get a consensus to move forward. So I'm gonna have Mike go through kind of the project and then what it would look like to build the next phase. Mike?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Drainage runoff problems, flooding problems on 16th Terrace go back from many, many years. The city began to take an active interest in figuring out how to address them as early as 2011. However, the projects that we bring you today had their origin based on that study from 2011, where we did a more detailed study in 2017 to design a series of improvements or identify series of improvements for 16th Terrace from Thornton South to Vilas. And we've completed the first of what is essentially three phases. Prior to this, we did do some work down there between Limit and Vilas. It's the same system. We replaced a, a large section of corrugated metal pipe, straightened it out, put in concrete pipe, prior to beginning this work in 2017. And in 2019, I've got the, the graphic here. It may not all show up as well on one page as, as we'd like. But the big red circle is essentially the detention basin that was recently constructed. We've had two pretty good storms on it this year. It appears to work. It fills up with water. It drains out slowly over a period of several hours, which is good because if it didn't drain out over several hours, it's kind of in and out in a matter of about 30 minutes. So it does reduce the amount of water running through the system. We replaced some pipe and a big junction box. The second phase of this project is, is identified in, in describing the book here. Basically, is halfway, the remaining distance down to Vilas. And up at the top here is, is a bar that represents a swale that needs to be constructed at the corner of 16th Street and Thornton, and that would direct sheet flow water into the detention basin. Currently, it runs down this large grassy area and avoids going through the detention basin, if you will. Going further south, the, the square shape is replacement of a existing pipe. It's 54-inch corrugated metal pipe that we've replaced with essentially the same size concrete pipe, or pipe. I've lost track of where we are in the design. And then the yellow line represents channel improvements to prevent further bank erosion and channel bottom erosion south from 2301 to the south line of property at 2401 16th Terrace. That is, the stuff in yellow is what we're calling Phase Two, and it's tentatively scheduled for construction in 2020. The second part of that, we're calling Phase Three, is, is, you see the yellow line here at 2401 16th Terrace. That is additional channel improvements south through the remainder of the properties to connect to existing improvements at Vilas Street. And that is tentatively scheduled for construction in 2022. The money is, is available through the Stormwater Utility Fund. And Mike Hooper, working with city manager, put together kind of a flow chart or an expectation of what funds will be spent in what year, along with our anticipated revenue and the projects. There's a lot of projects out there, and the truth is, with the Stormwater Utility creation, it has raised the awareness of people that said, "Hey, I've got a stormwater problem. Let me tell you about it." So we keep finding more things. So the, the list continues to expand. We are preparing. And the plans for these improvements here on 16th Terrace are, are complete. I need to sign the title sheet. And our next step is to begin easement acquisition, where we will be contacting property owners up and down the line, let them know if the commission concurs that this is the direction to move forward. We expect in 2020 to be doing this project, which the, the project, of course, will come back to you for review of the bids and all the, the normal things. But there's plenty of other work we're doing with, we call Orange Fence Two, which is continually evolving, but being designed by city staff to address the small projects that directly, that are holes in people's backyards or, or impacting streets that may need to be closed should the situation get worse.
The biggest timing factor on this is easements. These are people's backyards. It's heavy equipment. It's a dramatic shift to our view of the landscape. A lot of the vegetation that's grown up, I think it's gonna look cleaner and nicer, but it's gonna look different. So that's the challenge with these projects, is you can't start the project till you have all of them in the project, and there is a lot of homes there. So I just want to temper expectations that we are going full bore with the caveat that we have a lot of easements to get.
Mr. McDonald, I don't want to be one, say, "What about this backyard?" But on 16th Street, not 16th Street Terrace, one, one block east, a little bit north of Vilas, there's a creek that goes, creek or a waterway that runs behind some of the homes there. Will this project take some of the pressure off of that, you know, which?
This is the creek between 16th Street and 16th Street Terrace, so it would be the west of those blocks.
It's west of it. Isn't there one?
There's another creek that comes in from the, east flows west. I believe it comes in this way.
Mr. Dedeky, Doc's house. Doc Johnson, Doc Johnson. Remember, we went out there. Isn't that on 16th Street?
And you can. I'm thinking that it is. I believe it's, I believe this house here, 2401, sits far off the, there's two, three houses that are far, far to the east off 16th.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Does this take any of the pressure off of that?
No, this has not addressed that.
It doesn't, I mean, doesn't it relieve some of the pressure?
No, sir.
Okay.
This, this, the water that's in that system would flow into the work that we're doing on the channel between 16th and Terrace and 16th Street, but does not directly affect that.
I'm sure someday you'll be asked about that one.
That channel between 16th Street and 16th Terrace, was that something that was planned from the very beginning, or is that something that you kind of found out during Phase One?
The water, water's always flowed that way, and as this property was subdivided in late 70s, I guess, they designed a stormwater system to address the water that existed. There was probably some creek straightening that was done.
Right.
Today, it would be more difficult to do that, and the soils are highly erodible, so as you shorten the distance for the creek, it essentially increases its velocity, and it will create a lot of erosion, so I knew, I knew somebody that lived up in this, this area. Here, right after I moved here, went to, went to dinner at his house, and he had a nice creek in his backyard. Now it's a giant ditch, and it is.
Well, it's considered a point where it's starting to take fences and utility.
Yeah, there's some fences, utility poles, and like buried foam cables and things. So the waters always run kind of the basic direction that it's been channeled. If you look at the historic map of where it actually was, it's fairly, fairly closely parallel, so there's, there's some absolute differences where things have been moved around, but the drainage basins remain the same. We haven't changed any of that. The same amount of water ends up now at the, at the low end of the system. It's, it's all, it's all coming to the same point that it always has.
I think it's an excellent plan. I mean, it's, there's some simplicity to it that, it's a complicated project, but there's, in terms of the way you phased it, and it just, it just is understandable for, for me and I hope our citizens in terms of what's going on.
Don Baker with Water Resources Solutions, they've done the design on this, and it's really a series of, I won't say small, fairly, fairly good-sized rock dams, if you will, that the water will stepping stone its way down, which slows it down, and if it's not moving so fast, it doesn't erode the banks and the channel bottom. So that will be a series of medium to large steps, and there's a couple of big steps. The geology underneath changes about halfway down. I think right at about the 2401 level, there's, there's quite a big drop, and so they will accommodate that with this design.
So if there's a consensus, we'll go forward with the project as sort of submitted, and you'll see a, a design contract before you at some point in the future.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, one last thing. Totally unrelated to any of this, 31 years ago tonight was my first meeting, my first day of work for the city of Leavenworth. My 32nd year tonight, much as I did my first year.
Have the meetings gotten easier? Mr. McDonald, have the meetings gotten easier?
The meetings have continued to be more interesting every year.
You're a politician.
Well, before you leave, do you have any updates on 10th Street?
10th Street work is scheduled to begin next Monday, the 9th. They have started on Thornton Street. They've got that intersection at Fifth Avenue, Maple Thornton is blocked off. There's plenty of people that see the signs and draw on around them that, you know, they can do what they want to do. Police will write tickets for that, but tomorrow, they probably will not be able to do that at the end of the day.
Appreciate it, thanks for that.
And the parking lot, it's across from City Hall, they started work on that, and 10th Avenue, it was kind of, it's in the paper that starting this week, I believe, and I think correctly, that the busy, busy digging up stuff work is actually next, next Monday, and it'll go quickly.
And when, when is the Thornton project starting?
Right now.
Starting?
Yes. Tomorrow, we have another transportation meeting, and any of you commissioners are welcome to join us. We'll be at the Guidance Center at 1:00, and the first meeting was more of a public meeting. Mary Dwyer has been a really great help with bringing all this together, bringing all of us together, but the first meeting was more of a public meeting. This is drilling down to our actual communities that, I got a frog in my throat, sorry, are, are interested in pursuing transportation transit for our county, and anyway, so we will find out more tomorrow. We have people from Mid-America Regional Council will be there, putting on the meeting, and ATA, right? KC ATA and KDOT tomorrow, so you're welcome to join us. Thank you.
No, just, just a reminder, two and a half weeks until Camp Leavenworth, the festival for the first city, and I've told the city manager, I think the strategic communication on getting the word out as far as this festival's been very, very good, so we're just, personally, I am hoping and praying that we have the blessing of good weather, because I know that it'll be a great.
We'll make it all.
Yeah, I saw this in my doctor's office the other day, laying next to the front desk, and she said, "Yeah, this is the first, one of these first city connections I ever looked at," but I saw that on the cover.
It's on I-72.
Yeah, I saw the billboard on I-70 and K-7 both, so they're out there.
It's great, it's great.
We just approved some merchandise, t-shirts, long-sleeved t-shirts, sweatshirt, because of the, hopefully, the fall, some really, really neat stuff that we hope people wear and like.
Well, I noticed on the store pro on their display area.
On the mannequins.
Camp, camp t-shirt.
That's cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Commissioner Partzinger?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Well, there's nothing else. Meeting adjourned.